Okay, 5:30 I call this meeting to order. Please join in my pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bartman. A second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Botts. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Visitors?
Roger Elversner?
Is that mic on?
Oh, yeah.
I read in the paper about that they're gonna have a middle levy raised for certain things that were needed. And there's one item I was interested in, and there's parts of that issue I don't know, and you do, and there's parts of the issue I've seen. So I'm not gonna try to give you the fine answer, I'm just gonna give you the side of the story I see. It's about whether or not you need another social worker. I asked a neighbor, a teenager, I said, "What do you think about more taxes for another social worker?" And the student says, "Another social worker? We already got two, and it's not that big at school." So that student didn't see a problem. And that's one person's opinion, and those that don't need social workers probably don't see it, and those that do probably would. So I decided to see what more information I could get. And I've seen the newspaper, a lot of different high schools graduating classes, and I see you have more National Honor Society students than most. When I was younger, it was one-half, one percent, which is almost nobody, and I think it's better that more kids get recognition. But I talked to someone in Sioux Falls a couple years ago, and they got seven percent, and you got two, three times that much. So if one student don't see any need, and you got a whole lot of kids at the top, it makes me suspicious if it's really not needed that much. I had a suite mate in college when I was freshman, he was a psychology major, and three-quarters of the way through the year, I says, "Doc, do you take psychology to figure yourself out?" He plows a little, says, "Yeah, maybe I do." And then a dad-in-law, that was a social worker, and he had just had this mindset that everybody needs more help. They come from a dysfunctional situation, they study to figure themselves out, and they wanna help people, 'cause they know people need help. And now, the psychology, the psyche of a social worker is, we need more. Because when they're young, they cover some stuff up, and they think all these kids are covering stuff up. And so, there's needs for it, but their tendency is to assume there's more need than there is. Now, if there's proof there's a need. My sister just became the third counselor at a school in Colorado, and they had a high suicide rate. They also had a high group of good students. They lived just up the hill, up the mountain from Colorado Springs, and these people, they're rich people, they're Mountain View houses, the student body come from families of 200,000 income plus a year. And their parents say, "You gotta get, you know, top one percent in the class, or that's what you need to succeed." So they got 25 percent, the kids are trying to get one percent, and they can't, so they get a high suicide rate. Now, if you've got a problem with, I mean, if you've got a lot of kids at the top and the bottom, it might be that you got too much pressure, that they think they gotta be superstars or fail. And then you could get a lot of kids with drugs, and I don't know if you do or not. You know how many problem kids you got. But don't assume just 'cause it's social workers, 'cause we need more social workers. Find proof. If you got proof that there's serious problems, two might be enough, but maybe you gotta get a better one, maybe you don't need, maybe one is fine, and so, that's just my opinion.
Thank you. That's it? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Seconds.
I don't know whether you told them.
Thank you, Mr. Botts. Thank you, Mrs. Weiss.
Oh, let me see.
No?
Mr. Anderson has a question.
There was a question on the number of summer techs that we hire. We have a set number of hours that they work, and they have a lot of coming and going, so this is pretty much within our budget. It's the same amount of hours, it's just how and who can work, when, and those types of things. It's a really great opportunity, a lot of these kids get some hands-on tech experience, and I think it's also important to note that Josh Stukel, our tech director, is actually certified, so when we do the wiring for our security cameras, and when we're gonna do the PA systems down at Brown and Hill, he's actually certified, and so they help pull all the wires and do all of that work. So it saves us a lot of money in us having someone who's capable of doing those types of things, and I think it's a great opportunity for these students to get a little bit more tech savvy and learn how all that infrastructure stuff works, so, and they help out a great deal, so. That was a question that was raised, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. So, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, 5.1 through 5.11.17, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Six, administrative reports and information, 6.1.1, Jackie.
Budget year-to-date, green light. We still look good, 77 percent. Last year, we were at 79 percent, so it looks like we're doing okay as far as the budget is concerned. I'm working on the budget that will be presented at the June board meeting, so.
Thanks.
That's all I have. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions for Jackie? Thanks, Jackie. Mr. Strasser, you're up.
Okay. Obviously, it's a big week. We have graduation next Sunday at 2:00. You're all invited to attend graduation. I know some of you will be there, and others, you know, we want you all there if it's possible. We'll have a spot for you, just as you face the stage, kinda over to the left, some chairs for you, for you guys to sit, and your spouses if you want to, as well. So, that's on Sunday. Along the way, tomorrow's seniors' last day, so we've got a few things. Because Friday is like taking field trip day, we are gonna do our walkthrough of the elementaries tomorrow afternoon, so we kinda got that set in stone here a few minutes ago, and we'll be taking the kids over, like we had done at the end of last year. So, looking forward to that, and then we'll do our little senior countdown at 2:59 tomorrow. So, just kinda a little tradition there. It's pretty simple, but kinda fun. So, our seniors will be out, and then we'll get everything ready for senior recognition Friday morning, and then practice to follow the recognition program. So, you're all welcome. I think you've got some information that Daphne sent to you about all those events, so. Yeah, big week for seniors, and tomorrow is it, from an academic standpoint for them. So, that's what's going on on that end. Working on summer programming, we run a seventh to 12th grade credit recovery targeted services program, planning on starting June 19th, going through July 27th, I believe. We do that four days a week. So, getting those details together, so I can get that out to parents and kids who would wanna be in the summer program. Other things, I don't know if you have middle school kids or not, or middle school kids, but track and field day would be a wonderful, warm day for that. For once, yes. So that was a real fun day. It's always one of the things we look forward to each year, so, track and field day. But we're starting to get preliminary data from our MCAs and ACT scores, so starting to take a look at some of that, and we'll use that preliminary data before it's officially open, and that comes to us usually in August, but we'll kinda use it as we plan and set goals for next year. So, that's out there, and then working on getting the scheduling process, kinda those end-of-year things together, so that I can talk to teachers about their schedules for next year, putting that together. And then finally, filling our needs. You saw some of our resignations, so working at filling our open positions and trying to find the best people possible, so. I report unless you have questions.
Questions?
How are you doing filling your open positions?
Well, you saw, there are two there, for the music and the life sciences. Currently have five open positions, hoping to fill the fifth grade relatively soon, and the others are, I think, are closing soon, so. But I would just say, like every school, there's not an abundance of teachers. There's a shortage, and, yeah. So, it's just something that, you know, we face nowadays.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Strasser. Ms. Bartman?
Yes, well, I'm happy to say I got everybody that I need hired, so we're good to go. So, knock on wood, and we'll hope that stays that way. So that's good. We are doing a targeted service summer school program at Hill this summer, and really, all we're doing is kind of wrapping up the year, and got some field trips going on. Hill Olympics are on Friday afternoon, you're all welcome to come out there and check that out. It's a tradition that I started a long, long time ago, so pretty excited about that. And at 1:30 at Brown, we're gonna do a Relay for Life field day, so we're doing a color run and that kinda stuff, so you're certainly welcome to do that as well. And then the last day of school, we're doing some fun things. Right now at Hill, we're gonna go swimming at the Pipestone Family Aquatic Center in the afternoon, so we're pretty excited about that, so.
When is your run at Brown?
It is at 1:30, I believe.
On Friday?
Nope, on Thursday.
Okay, I missed that thing.
Nope, that's okay. We were gonna do it Friday, but it was really yucky, so we decided to move it to Thursday, so. So, yeah. Other than that.
Questions? Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
School board members?
Negotiations has met with the teachers once. We've given them a list of language changes that we feel would be appropriate for the contract. They had no requests to break forward to us, so we do have negotiations tonight after the board meeting, hoping they have some information for us. And I was contacted by Jenny Swenson, the mayor of Island, and she wanted to offer that the Island Community Center could be rented if that would be something that the school district would need, as we've been looking for space for different things, that they would like to be considered for that. And I know it does have a kitchen in it. And it's all one-bottle.
Pretty new, fairly new, too, yeah.
Yeah. It's fully handicapped, accessible, so. I told her I would bring that to the meeting, and I'll give you her cell phone number after the meeting then.
Sure.
Thanks, Jackie. Anyone else?
I wasn't at the last meeting for the library, but since I wasn't at the meeting last time, I said that I would report how things are going, to pull you guys in on, oh, do I need to push the button? Oh, now I'm green, I'm good. See, I probably didn't need one anyway, but. So, the library, Jody kinda gave us an analysis of last year's numbers to this year's numbers, and the numbers have all increased. The programming numbers have gone up. They're looking at doing some outreach to various communities that don't have that bookmobile that came in, so they were gonna kinda try and line something up. Like I said, I wasn't at their last meeting, so I don't know how things progressed with that, but they were gonna try and look at having a drop-off zone in some of the smaller towns, just for some books, but, you know, trying to find a space that was open and accessible, you know, at the right times, I think, was an issue that they were all looking into. But I just said that I would report to say that the library is doing well. I guess that Jody and her staff are doing good things there, so I said I would report, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Daubert.
I think also, policy and the facilities and grounds committees will probably be trying to schedule a meeting here over the next couple weeks. Got some items that, policy, we, as you can tell with our agenda, we've got a bunch of them, we'll be finishing up, so I got a whole new stack, they have to put them all together, so, another two-hour meeting of going to policies, sorry.
I would just like to say, good luck to everybody in the fall season, and congratulations to the FFA and Carla Nelson, that's like hitting the home runs. That's huge, winning that Star Farmer. So, I just wanted to give them some recognition, and everybody else?
Recognize Mr. Strasser for principal of the year.
Oh, yeah. Congratulations. Anyone else?
We had a tech, well, we had a virtual tech meeting. We're getting all techie now that we're on the tech meeting. But anyway, they said that the MCA testing went good on the iPads and Chromebooks, everything went well with that, and they just talked about the six students that they were gonna be hiring, and then they planned to do the intercom June 1st, start with that, so.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson, you're up.
All right. Enrollment numbers, we are up again. I think we're, looks like we're gonna end the year. We started at 11:41, and we got to 11:40. We were as low as, I think, 11:29 at one point during the year, and here we are, back up to about where we started, so. Again, a lot of coming, going with students, it may seem, but we don't have the same number, same students here that we started the year with. Same numbers, but a lot of different kids, so there's a lot of coming and going as we go through the year. I did wanna give you a budget planning update. If you recall, this year, we wanted to have a budgeting process, we've been working on that, and next month, Jackie will be presenting the 1718 budget for you to approve, that will be submitted to the state. We have to officially do that, so. What this is an update of is the process, kind of, of what we've done, an overview of where we're at so far. So, if you recall back to January, we put together basically our projected revenues for next year of about 13.3 million. Our original expenditures are about 13.8, which is a deficit of 474,000. And then I did break down what our budget is. You can see that about nine million is salary and benefits, and we've got our utilities and transportation, special education, and then, of course, I've got our revenues and where that comes from. You can see most of that comes from the state, but we do have local levies and then some of our other aids. These numbers were given to you in January. Jackie's been working pretty hard the last three months, refining and putting different things in, so you're gonna see a little bit different numbers next month, as she's been able to kinda refine, get most of our staff in for next year that we're looking at. We won't have our increases, but there'll be different numbers. I know. I know, Jackie. Some budget assumptions, just to remind you, when we did our budget, we basically maximum, max estimate the expenditures and minimum estimate on the revenues. You saw we had quite a huge deficit, but that's a very conservative. We anticipated no changes in staffing or programming. We took into account a reduction in the number of students, and if you think about the state aid, students and the numbers of students is where we get much of our revenue, so when we, we're being very conservative in estimating that we're gonna have fewer students next year. We're expecting a 0% increase in revenue in that budget. We've budgeted about a 2% increase in expenditures, and there's $150,000 contingency in that budget. The administrative team worked to put together a number of things, and here is a list of what we've put in place next year for improvements. The director of curriculum teaching and learning is there, a tech integrationist. We're looking to expand our preschool program. You know, you mentioned Jody in the library, she put, she's all excited, she wants to get a makerspace area, and that was in our budget, and we took it out, 'cause we really didn't have a champion for that area, and I think when Jody came to us, we said, "You know, this is gonna be great," so we would put some money into that area in the library, and hopefully get some really cool stuff, and I think when she gets that up and running, that'd be a good thing for the board to go over there, take a little look at, or have her come and give us a little bit of a demo, but we met with Cory and Tony, and I think they're also looking to have a mobile makerspace area, and bring that down to the elementaries, too. So, that was one that was just added here in the last month. Vocational program support for our work with Minnesota West and the Carpentry Program and Pipestone EDA. Our tech replacement cycle is all of our iPads and Chromebooks and updates, teacher laptops that we'll be doing for next year. Suburban update, curriculum materials was 100,000, we had to adjust it, we're up to about 130,000 for the language arts. Phone system, PA systems at Brown and Hill. We have our other LTFM projects of about 145,000 that we'll be doing this summer. The tennis courts and the financing there is 95, and then we're looking at substitute teacher pay increase, which would probably cost us about 25,000, so. Total improvements, the admin team is looking at for next year is 1,073,000. The adjustments and what we've made to look to balance our budget, so to speak, is a number of things that we're looking at. We had some co-op, with the service co-op, some services we reduced, saving us 52,000. We are looking, if we do get a 1.5 increase, which is kind of where we're at with the budgeting, that's about 130,000. Could be a little more, could be a little less, but that's where we're at there. Some savings in special education, overtime reduction, staffing adjustments, that's some retirements, we've made some shifts with some of our tech assistant, tech para, retirement of the tech assistant, reduction of the testing coordinator, and shift those things, so we end up with about 164,000 there. Of course, our technology budget had that 250,000 in it. We have a capital budget that has 220,000. We have a budget for LTFM, and then, of course, lease levy, if we approve that, we'll have those dollars that'll be coming in, so. Our adjustments were about 1.1 million, which gives us a difference of about 82,000 to the good to play with a little bit, and there are some other unknowns as we go forward. We have teacher negotiations that we have to look at, and there could be a potential of a TRA increase of 1%, which doesn't look like the, if they, I don't think they're gonna fund that, and they may not go with the full 1%, but these are things that, when I look at our 82,000 cushion, you know, that's a little bit, you know, so we're trying to be as balanced there as we can with the budget. So this is what we're proposing, and we'll try to put that together and reflect all of those things in next month's budget, and then... She's gotta throw me off my game all the time. So, I don't know if you have any questions on the budgeting process and where all of that is at, but this is what we're looking at for next year. You always wanna make improvements, and you wanna try to find ways to pay for them, so I think we made some adjustments in using some of the dollars that we have available to pay for those things, so. That's much of an update, and next month, you're gonna get one that has to be approved and sent into the state, so, that's it. Turning that off for now.
Anything else?
That's it.
You're good?
I think, yep.
All right, number seven, old business. 7.1, reading of, second reading of policy 204, 7.2, second reading of policy 205, 7.3, second reading of policy 206, and 7.4, second reading of policy 750. Do I have a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Botts. Thank you, Mr. Roy. Any discussion?
I just wanted, again, we did a policy committee, did a lot of work, you know, and these are things that need to be updated, and we did ask, these needed to have a second reading. The most significant change probably was in how we calculate our fund balance, but there weren't any changes from what we went through last month, so.
Any other discussions? Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 7.5, second reading of middle school, high school handbooks.
Mr. Strasser, I know that you presented these, and all of these we're gonna take, but we, there were maybe a few adjustments that were made, so if you could just kinda highlight maybe what, any changes that were made since the last meeting, and any other highlights? And then, of course, I guess I've recommended that we approve all of these handbooks, but we do need to go through.
Yeah, the main change is on, was on page nine, under prom, and we had talked about that at the last meeting, and basically, we struck out, I'm sorry, where to say that, the number six, where it says, "PS students must be passing the classes as measured by the most recent grading grade," so we eliminated that, otherwise, the rest is there, so that's the adjustment there, and I thought that was the only adjustment on the high school. Yeah, I don't think anything else.
You just added a bunch of the policy things and revamped some of those, that was a lot of the, was more tidying up things, correct?
Right, right. There were no significant changes in terms of the actual policy. That's the high school, and on the middle school one, if you have an opportunity to look at that, we basically mirrored what we did at the high school level. The middle school looks a little bit different, because it is middle school, it's not the exact same thing, but the content that we changed is similar, so, I don't really know where to go specifically with that, other than the things that we put in. So, for example, we had the food service policy update, we include the electronic technologies, acceptable use safety policy, updated our attendance policy to be the same as the high school, so, yeah, that's how we approached that, and Flonda just types it in differently, because we have two columns, and you can put it in the agenda books that middle school kids get every year. The, let's see, I'll play that and talk about that. Yeah, that's...
Any discussions, questions? Do you have a motion to approve the high school, middle school, high school handbook? Thank you, Mrs. Weiss, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman. All in favor? Signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 7.6, second reading of the elementary handbook. Ms. Bartman?
Not really, thank you. Not really any significant changes. I would say the biggest thing would be under attendance, we did put what the rewards will be, we'll do a monthly rewards, a monthly reward for students who come to school and have a full month of no absences, they'll get a reward, and I'll come in to their classrooms and do a little ceremony, and give away certificates and that kinda thing, so. That was really the only addition, everything else was pretty much the same, just like Cory said, cleaning it up, and that kinda thing, so.
And I think we did get our food service
Yep.
updates that
Yep.
we passed last fall, so now they're in the handbooks
Yep.
as is.
Yep.
Questions? Do you have a motion to approve the elementary handbook?
So moved.
Thanks, Mr. Roy. Second? Thanks, Mrs. Daubert. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 7.7, second reading of activities handbook.
Clay probably needs that podium back, Deb.
Sorry.
I think, Mr. Anderson, the biggest issue is the, and just so the board is clear on the eligibility, academic eligibility, that's the significant change that we're proposing for next year.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you can go to, I told you all the changes beforehand, if you go to W-
If you go to DU, Activity, Academic, Athletic, it was just the last two pages really there is where the changes since I last talked to you. Basically, we just cleaned up some of the activities that fall under the athletic and eligibility thing. We took out some that really didn't qualify under that, which was good because they're not state high school events or anything. Under standards, A, we took out the minimum GPA 1.65 because it basically hardly ever would come into play anyways, and we thought it just added more grayness, and we wanted to keep it more clean because it's just the F policy. So we took out that, maintained a minimum 1.6, 1.65 GPA standard in there. Did a little cleanup. We took out two statements that were basically saying the same thing. We had contradicted each other just a little bit in number four. And we basically just moved that up. So we didn't change that. We just moved that up and took the other thing that was in there out. I don't have the other thing that was in there because we just moved that up, okay? And then we added an appeal policy in case there was, you know, there's always those circumstances. We added an appeal policy where students had the right, three days after the grades were posted, that they could appeal their academic ineligible if they wanted to. They could, they would do that to me, and then I would bring that in front of a committee consisting of an administrator, which is not me, a teacher, and a counselor, okay? And then they would look it over and see if their appeal had any merit to it or not. All right? So that really is the big changes.
And maybe you can just explain what the academic policy is. What is it?
It's what it was and to what it is now.
Yep.
Okay. We went by a credit policy. Remember last time I explained, we go by credit policy currently, okay? Which means that if you fall behind a certain amount of credits, we have little benchmarks, you become academically ineligible, okay? It's a two system. In one, it's hard to be academically ineligible here right now because it's hard to fall behind. Yet if you do fall behind, it's almost impossible to get caught up, okay? So there's, you know, if you're academically ineligible, you may have lost every carrot that we can throw out there for you to help, you know, motivate you to get academically eligible. And I know two situations currently that, had we had the F policy, I think we could have helped a couple students of ours a long time ago as opposed to when it came this fourth quarter. So I'm excited about changing that. I really like the fact that you can't fail a class and still be eligible because I just don't think that's right. And number two, I like the fact that if you do fail a class or you get behind in two weeks, you could be eligible again if you get your act together and get going. And that's the best part about the new policy, in my opinion. And so in a nutshell, that's what it is, is based on quarter grades, okay? It's not based on credits anymore, okay? So that is, however, I will say, still, the state high school league, you know, must be maintaining progress towards graduation always comes into play because that's their base rule as well. So you always have to, you know, look at that as well. But that doesn't come into play very often, I will say. This will come into play far more than that one will. And if you have any questions about that?
I do. I wasn't at the last meeting, and I'm going to admit I didn't read that whole policy. So who is, just to clarify, who is responsible for checking?
Me.
Okay.
Yep. And I'll have a system where two weeks after they're ineligible, I'll get a sheet of paper, go around to all their teachers, get their marking off that they're all there. If I have any questions, I'll contact the teachers, and I'll deem them eligible at that time.
Okay.
Because board members, I mean, if a student fails a course at the nine-week grading period slots, they are ineligible for two weeks...
Yep.
...at least. And at the end of two weeks, if they then are passing, they can return back to the activity.
Yep.
So the question will be raised, is, you know, my...
It could be two weeks, it could be longer than two weeks.
If you don't get your grade.
And there's no any contests in there, too. So there's a two-week, two-contest. So spring quarter grades, this spring quarter, nothing will happen because we're just, you know, it wouldn't be fair in the spring because we're finishing up now. But starting next year, the spring quarter grades will affect them in the fall.
Okay.
Yep.
So if they're academically ineligible, is that to participate, or does that also include practices?
They can and should practice along with that unless they need to get their courses made up. So it's to participate, yep.
And who's monitoring the grades and recording them to you, or are you checking them?
I'm checking them.
Okay.
Yeah, every quarter. It'll be a process Daphne and I don't get very accustomed to.
The new student...
I've done this, just so you know, I've done this at other schools, so, you know, I've seen it in action, it works just fine.
Mr. Anderson, Mr. Strasser, and myself sat down and kind of went through this, and I asked, what is the big self-conference policies? And this is a pretty common, like...
Yeah, very common.
Policy that you'll see across the conference.
Yep.
So it's not unusual. This is kind of the standard in the conference.
Any other discussion or questions?
So it's, it's end of quarter grades is what you're using?
Mm-hmm.
So what if halfway through the quarter, they're failing?
They'll become ineligible until a quarter grade is posted, yep. Because otherwise, you're going to have to hire a full-time person just to monitor grades all the way through that thing.
Well, and I understand that, but if you're willing to go in and check them, you know, after they're ineligible, to see if they do become eligible...
I don't go in there to check, no. No, they'll get a sheet of paper to go around to their teachers, and they'll have to sign off that they're passing every class to get eligible again.
Okay.
Where I'm, where I...
What's the quarter? How long's a quarter?
Nine weeks.
So sometimes, isn't the sporting, I mean, if they're failing, by the time you get your quarter grade, isn't your sport over, maybe?
Sure. It goes, it goes in the next season.
Oh, what, yeah.
So if they're failing right now, would it go to next fall?
Not this year. But that's correct. That's what I'm saying, yep.
If we add it in there.
Right.
And that's if they participate in a...
More than once.
If they don't, then it'll just carry over to the next time they participate.
They're going to have the next quarter grading period to pass all their classes.
Mr. Anderson, do you think this, that you have seen, you've seen both systems now? Do you think...
Yes, twice. I've done both systems in two different schools twice.
And you see more success or better outcomes with this particular policy you're proposing, you think?
Students a lot, students that are going the wrong way, you get to them a lot sooner, you know, than in the credit system. That's what I like a lot the best, yep. And in both places where we've had the credit system, we've had students that become academically ineligible, and there's no hope for them being eligible within a whole season. And that's happened in both places I was at. Here and when I was at Albert Lee, we had a credit system for a while, so.
I just think it kind of goes back to if the student is, any student, you know, if they're starting to fail. I mean, I think it's the teacher's responsibility, in which that probably is the case, you know, to let the student know, to let the parents know. I mean, as long as we know that that is happening, you know, that the teachers are notifying the parents of this, and that maybe it won't get to this point come quarter time, maybe they can get caught up. I mean, this is just any student, I guess, but not...
In my experience, just when we put the F system in, there's not that many academically ineligible students. So it's a lot less kids probably getting Fs, which I think is a good thing.
What are the reporting requirements, Mr. Strasser? Well, we're talking about the nine-week quarter. Is there a progress report? Is there times when...
Yeah, we do our midterm reporting. You know, we have size for two weeks updating, updating your grades.
Some teachers are not good about that. I'm going to tell you that right now. I'm going to tell you that right now. And it's not just me that's upset when I go and look at my kids' grades. It's the students because then all of a sudden, they come down to the wire and they don't know what grade they have because nothing has been recorded for weeks. And now they're like, what can I do now? I didn't know what my grade was here. I think I thought I had an all and A, and now I have B+ or, I mean, it is what it is. But I just, I just think we need to start making these teachers a little bit more accountable as to recording these grades when they happen. It's not all the teachers, but anyway, I've had that issue for years, but...
The other thing to tie in is, you know, we've tied in, tied in on number five there, the ICU list, which also helps in monitoring of our grades and it's up to them, too.
Okay. That sounds good, as long as you think this is the way to go? Because I want to see these kids participate, you know, but they also have to earn it, too.
Yep. It's the idea.
Any other discussion? Do I have a motion to approve the activities handbook?
So...
Thank you, Mr. Roy, in a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Wees. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of those opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Wimp Business, 8.1, first reading of the learning readiness handbook.
It's pretty much what you see as what you... Yeah. So were any changes made except the discipline was added at the end? Is that correct?
No, that's it. Just the discipline at the end, yeah. Probably following the same plan that we do rate. So, yeah, that's the only thing I noticed, too, when it was said to me.
Any questions or discussion? Otherwise, it's a non-action item. No? All right. 8.2, approve contract for Melanie Wellnitz, Director of Curriculum Teaching and Learning. Mr. Anderson, anyone listening?
I'm happy to say that we have been able to screen applicants, and Melanie Wellnitz, who I believe is a Pipestone Arrow herself, but comes with some really strong credentials. She's been working, she was a teacher for a number of years. She also works for, has worked with the co-op and Minnesota Department of Education for school improvement. So what we've been doing, she is right on board, and I think the administrative team feels very strongly that she is going to be a great addition to our district. And I think she is philosophically where we're at and is really going to help support our teachers as they move forward with standard implementation, student achievement, and a number of things that will work. So I think I mentioned that this has probably been our number-one priority for, in budgeting to get this position. We have a great number of needs, and so we got a great person that's going to fit in this role, so appreciate your support.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the contract for Melanie Wellnitz?
Yep.
Correct?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbert, in a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
I got a question for Marcy. Is this a one- or a two-year contract?
I believe it's a one-year.
No, it's a two-year.
Is it two-year?
Well, that's my question because under salary, we show two years.
So, yeah, ending June 30, 2018.
But under duration, it shows a one-year.
Mm-hmm. Oh, so you negotiate, the same negotiation.
So she'd be in your guys' negotiations.
Oh, so she'd just be...
Because of admin.
Again, I, my thought is, is it's like a teaching contract. You can have the year, but there's, she falls under the same as the principals. She's a probationary teacher for one year. At the end of next year, we can determine if we want to continue with her services or not. She's probationary. She has had continuing contract status previously, so after next year, if we offer her a second contract, then she will have tenure rights, which, you know, granted, it's for a director of curriculum and teaching, so she won't have any seniority to bump anybody else, but I don't know. I guess that's a good, I, we got two years on the salary, about one year on that.
Right. So, I mean, if it's going to be that way, where then she goes in with your group as negotiations, then I don't think we should have that second salary and years in there. It should just be the one, the first one. I mean, that's, that's the way I would think of it.
Right. Haven't had any motions yet, have we?
No. Yeah, we did. Yes, we did. So we need to amend the motion?
We motioned and seconded, and you called for it.
But we didn't vote. So we can amend our motion, correct?
Yeah, we didn't vote, so. It's not passed.
Mrs. Dobbert.
How do I properly, I just...
I think we have to...
You make a motion to amend the motion.
Okay. I made a motion to amend the motion of Melanie Wellnitz's contract.
To drop the salary for the second year.
The salary for the second year.
As it will be negotiated.
As it will be negotiated after one year.
For, yep.
Got that? Did I talk slow enough?
As it will be negotiated.
For 18, 18.
And then we need a second to your amended motion, I believe.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Botts. Now we have to approve the amended motion, correct?
Correct.
There we go.
All those in favor of approving the amended motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And that motion passes. And we're...
We'll just adjust it, get it to her.
Do you have to make a new motion? No, I think we're good to go. Onward to 8.3.
All right.
Approve resolution relating to $790,000 tax-exempt lease purchase agreement, authorizing a request for proposals. That's an addition.
We spoke last month about how we were going to finance the tennis courts. Springs that has put together this resolution that would use lease levy funds, and so this is the official resolution that will allow us to move forward and begin the process of requesting proposals for the funding of the tennis courts.
So now it will be local banks only with this resolution?
I believe that we can send this off to the local banks, and they have, they can have the opportunity. I guess I should, we did speak to them, they're interested, so. We have four banks that are official depositaries of the school. All four have been spoken to. They will get this RFP and can, however they work that out, that's up to them, but my thing on this is, we get it financed local, money stays here, doesn't go to the cities.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution relating to $790,000 tax-exempt lease purchase agreement, authorizing a request for proposals?
So...
Thank you, Mr. Roy.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Wees. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 8.4, operating levy discussion.
All right. Let me get my presentation up again. It's coming into view.
Warming up.
What do you call that, fading in?
Yeah.
Tonight, we, the timeline for operating levy, we need to request from MDE by August if we want to renew and what's... if we want to renew, and what the pieces of our operating levy will be. So, tonight, I'm asking for the board to give me some direction on how you want to proceed, and so I'll take you through a little bit about the operating levy and some renewal facts. The current operating levy is set to expire in fiscal year 2018, after 2018. That is next year, so already in your truth and taxation, the operating levy's final year is next school year. We, we will get those funds, but it's always like a year behind. So, what we're looking for next November is where we would have the election for fiscal year nineteen. Renewal can be up to, for a period of up to ten years. The current one is a ten-year operating levy, and most many operating levies are in that ten-year term. But you can do five-year, seven-year variations, however you would like to. We are looking at doing an election next November that would begin generating that revenue, like I said, for fiscal year 2019. Our current operating levy totals about one thousand one hundred ninety-eight dollars per pupil. I think the original amount ten years ago, or nine years ago, was a thousand, thousand seventy-five, but due to whatever the state did with how they calculated, it changed. And so, this is still the exact, the same number, but it just, it just changes. So, again, moving targets, it's always fun to try to track this, but you can do it. If anybody ever has any questions, let me know, and we'll track them down, and we'll trace through how this all happens. Basically, our current operating levy generates about one point five million, or a million four hundred ninety thousand dollars per year that we put into our general fund. The state equalizes about six hundred and seventy-four thousand of that. So, of the one point five million, the state picks up a nice chunk of that to equalize, which I will get to in a little bit as to why they do that. The taxpayer cost on the operating levy is two hundred and six dollars per hundred thousand dollars in property value. If you have property that's valued at a hundred and fifty thousand, you're going to pay probably about three hundred and nine dollars per year. If you have two hundred thousand, this is the ratio, but I just use a hundred thousand. So, for every hundred thousand in property, you pay two hundred and six dollars. And that does not include agricultural land, so farmland, crop land, pasture land. That does not pay for the operating levy. The only time that land comes into play is when we have bond issues, like on this building. And I don't want to get the two confused, but there is, on, on operating levies, it's on your property value of your home, and for farmers, it's their one acre and their house is what they pay on. Those in town businesses, it's all hundred thousand dollar property. In the last ten years ago, they did dedicate a hundred and seventy-five dollars per pupil for technology, so I think that we would try to continue to do that. That's where we get about our two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, and why we're able to keep up to date with a lot of the stuff that we have here for our kids. The current referendum, as you can see, Pipestone, we're at eleven ninety-eight per adjusted a pupil unit, and you can see the whole western side of Minnesota and a lot of the southern side is darker. And that's because we have a little bit higher operating levies. You can see that the mode is seven hundred and twenty-four dollars, the median is nine hundred and thirty, but the state average is thirteen hundred dollars, thirteen hundred and two dollars per student. That's the state average, so you can see we're about a hundred dollars, a hundred and four dollars below the state average. This picture shows the equalization, and you'll see here all of the darker colors, which is most of Minnesota, that's how much property value there is per student. And you can see here, again, Pipestone, we have about two hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars per student. The state average is about five hundred and forty-nine thousand. This is what gives us our eligibility for equalization. So, when the state chips in six hundred and seventy-five thousand of our operating levy, it's because of the market value and the valuation of property here in Pipestone, Pipestone area school district. So, the state also has been giving you, the school board, the authority to levy without voter approval. Now, we've had a levy in place, so when these things happened, they're there, but we don't really notice them. But basically, all school districts can levy four hundred and twenty-four dollars per pupil without going to the voters. Now, we already had it in place. They put language that said, "You're not adding that on top of your operating levy that you have." So, of the eleven ninety-eight, four twenty-four was, was figured in. They also, a few years, and that was about in 2013, they also allowed another three hundred dollars per pupil levy authority, and we've had it be converted prior to last month, when you created that authority for the school district, which you will have for the next five years. So, Pipestone Area Schools now has exercised its authority to levy seven hundred and twenty-four dollars per pupil without going to the voters. So, to renew our current levy, at the amount that we receive now, next fall's ballot would say four hundred and seventy-four dollars would be not, would be the renewal of, of our operating levy. So, you take the seven twenty-four plus the four seventy-four, you get eleven ninety-eight. So, I think that's important to know, that in the last ten years, there have been changes with the legislature, and so when we do renew, it won't say eleven ninety-eight, it'll say four seventy-four is the renewal. Any questions there? Everyone remember? Okay. I think I did this during truth and taxation, too, so. So, considerations for you as the board. The renewal will ask taxpayers to continue with the two hundred and six dollars per year on a hundred thousand dollars in property value. The Finance Committee has basically thought that we should go with two questions, so the first question will be a renewal. The second question, if we do want to increase what we're asking for, we can do that. A second question for an increase would have an impact on taxes and generate the revenue as follows. And I used a hundred thousand dollars in property value again. But example one, if we were to raise one hundred dollars per pupil, this would raise taxes on a hundred thousand dollars in property value, thirty-three dollars per year. And it would generate about a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in revenue for the school district. Second example is two hundred dollars per pupil increase, that would be sixty-six dollars and eight cents, and generate about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. The third, at three hundred, would cost an additional ninety-nine dollars and twelve cents per year, and generate about three hundred and seventy-four thousand. And I had an example for any variation. The board can say, "We want to do two fifty, two seventy-five, two twelve." You can pull any number you want out, but I gave you these three general of, so you get an idea of how much revenue we generate. But basically, a twenty-five dollar increment, so if you went two hundred and twenty-five, that twenty-five is an additional eight dollars and twenty-six cents in taxes per year on a hundred thousand dollar property. So, does anybody have any questions on this, where we're at? All right. Some considerations, you asked me to look at what are the needs, and I should probably go back and say they, the state basically put operating levies in place because they were falling behind in their obligation to fund public education in the state. So, states were asking for levy authorities so that they could create and generate more revenues. That was back, I don't know when that all started happening, but since then, that's where they've even changed to where you can have some levy authority without going to the voters. But that's been one of the issues, why we have operating levies. Our needs of our students have grown, and support of the students in our schools has increasing district costs. Some examples of some student support needs. One of the priorities that we talked about this year was a school social worker. We currently have one social worker in the elementary school. We have two guidance counselors in the high school. What we would be looking for is to add another social worker, but we need to reconfigure, because we're not, the needs are in the high school, middle school, high school, that social worker support. You know, there were some good questions raised earlier tonight about proof being, you know, why do we need another social worker? I think it's, it's a very valid thing that we should be explaining, and so as we go on, I think we should be putting out a little bit more of that information of why do we ask for a social worker? So, you know, as we go forward, I, I feel very comfortable that we can tell that story of what, what a social worker will provide, and how we can expand our guidance counseling to help out in all of those areas. So, basically, move from a three-person to a four-person. You also heard there was two social workers in our district earlier. Paige Thompson is a school social worker that we employ through the Co-op, that they utilized her for a lot of training. So, they actually paid for a second social worker to be here, but technically, we only have one, one position. And now, she's been pretty much out of the district. We don't see Paige much anymore, so we're now to, there was that transition in the fall.
She's on the turn. But before that.
I don't work with her that much, so I didn't know. Probably should have known that. I knew that. Anyway, preschool programming is another, you know, we want to have all of our four-year-olds, and I think we just have to continue to expand and look at what can we do to make sure that we make those things happen for our four-year-olds. You know, there'll be some costs, but, you know, we put down this as something that we feel is important and a priority, and I think we don't want to see any kids not get this experience. The career and technical programming, this is things like our connection with Minnesota West and Carpentry. We're working with Laverne and some other school districts for medical occupations. I was up today at a conference at Southwest State, talking about manufacturing and the need for skilled workers, and, you know, we talk about offering these programs cost money, and typically, they have smaller class sizes, so this helps to offset some of those costs. Police resource officer here in the building, you know, we have to pay for that, and the community wants it, but, I mean, these things all take away dollars from the general fund, and, you know, I'm not saying it's not worth it, and we've got it, but just understand the financial impact of that. And then, the tech integrationist position, which is something that we're looking at hiring, too, because we know it's important, but, you know, all of these things add up to about three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, three hundred and forty thousand dollars in costs. And if you go back, you can see that's roughly under three hundred dollar increase, somewhere in there. So, those are just some examples. You asked me to put that together, and I would say that if we're asking for an increase, I would say that we, we are looking to support our students with some of their unique needs and these types of programs, and extra dollars would help us be able to continue to provide these types of things. So, that's where you guys come in. I'm looking for the parameters of how long do you want the next operating levy? Question one is a renewal, and the amount of the question two, or if we just want to renew. That's kind of where the board has to help me proceed and begin the process to talk again with Springstead, because we're going to need to put together formal resolutions for you to act on, and that we need to get to the state, and then I need to begin having community conversations and, and moving forward with this. So, I'll open it up to listen to what you guys can discuss and talk about.
So, if we do ten, I mean, we can always come back again sooner if we want, right?
Yes.
But I don't know why you wouldn't go for ten.
You can go back every year and ask for another operating levy question, or however you want to do that, so.
I don't see why you wouldn't go for ten, then, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, that would be my, I don't want to have to go through this.
Right. When it costs money.
In five years, we do five years.
I mean.
You know, I mean.
Costs money to vote.
Not to have this, I mean, if we're sitting pretty, or is this always, once we do over ten years, we, it's always ten years?
Every year, every year, the school board, we have a truth in taxation. You have to certify your levies. You set the amounts. This gives you your maximum.
Okay.
And you usually certify the maximum. We already talked about with the lease levy, we're going to, we said we would be reducing the LTFM levy to match that, so we wouldn't have a, we would have a net wash on tax increases for the tennis courts. You, you will do that manually every year when it comes to truth and taxation, and you set and send in to the, to the county what you want to levy.
Sure.
Same thing happens with your operating levy. You can do that, set whatever you want, you just have a maximum. Some schools do, it gets to be really a lot up and down, and with your, you know, it just makes budgeting a little bit more tenuous, or I don't know what word I want to. And it's just a lot of, you really got to be planning, and it's already, it's already fun working. Jackie trying to figure out next year. Sorry.
That makes it off, I want.
I like the ten-year, beyond what Katie said. I mean, they cost money to have elections all the time. Just will do that. I'm thinking maybe a two fifty on the second question, and we'd be close to getting some of that stuff, but. That's just me talking.
Two fifty total, it's like, two hundred and fifty, about what?
Oh, two hundred and fifty.
On the second question.
Second option.
Okay.
To go back and do, so instead of an even amount, you would do, well, I mean, I guess it's an even amount.
Two fifty.
Because it's eight dollars and twenty-six cents for every twenty-five dollars.
So, that'd be another sixteen fifty-two, so eighty-two, eighty-two dollars basically would be the raise on a hundred thousand dollars in property.
Put us in the ballpark to cover those.
It'd be close to covering the needs, and.
So, if you had about a fourteen forty-eight then, right? Total?
Total.
If you did the regional and added two fifty to it.
And that question's just going to say to support student needs, it's not going to be for one specific thing, it's going to be for all those things.
I gave examples.
Right.
Because, you know, right now, this is where things are at. You know, these are things that we definitely need. We already have some in place, and I hope, you know, police resource officer, you know, the county has a grant that's good for five years, but, I mean.
I'm just wondering, what, the question, it'll read, this will be for student support services, and then it'll have those examples, or it won't have those examples, it'll just say.
No, this is gonna, it'll say the ballot, that's what you'll get. The ballot question will say, you know, the second question is for two hundred and fifty dollars per pupil on top of, which will raise your taxes.
Oh, so it's not going to say what it's for, like the technology one?
We need to probably get that information out.
Why do you, when they did the technology one, it said technology on the second question.
And that, and maybe this will say two hundred and fifty for student support needs. You know, that gives us some flexibility of what we need and where we're going to. We may have a large influx of EL population, and we may need to do some things, which I think that's where this stuff goes, supporting vocational programming. You know, it's, it's not perfect, and if it doesn't pass, it doesn't mean we're going to cut all of those things, but you have to reevaluate your budget and prioritize it and see where things are at, so.
And the, the community survey, survey said they were comfortable with like fifteen hundred, right?
Fourteen ninety-five, or something like that.
Right, right.
Where the ballpark there, too, would be.
Yeah, this puts, you know, our, I mean, if you want to do the total, we're at eleven ninety-eight, so adding two fifty would be, get you in that fourteen fifty, which is probably right in the middle of that fourteen to fifteen hundred dollar range.
Just to get some discussion.
Right, right.
And it gets you where, you know. And it gets you where, you know, again, you know, if you go back and look at, you know, where we're at, state average is 1302. That's just the average. I mean, there's districts that are way up there. And I think I showed some of that to you too. I don't know if we'd be way out of whack being at 1450. And I think, you know, you heard tonight too about concern. I think you have to make sure that you let people know what this, what these things are, why we're doing it. I wouldn't focus on if it doesn't pass, what we would not have. I still think you have to support student. These might be our priorities, but other areas get thinned out too. So, you know, it's like your budget, you have to do that. We're just looking for these revenues to keep us going forward.
Do you think it would be, or 250 would be too much if people are aware that we might need an elementary school?
I feel like, that's how I feel. I feel like you want to maybe do less than that just because I feel like if people feel like there's this elementary need coming in, that there's going to be a bond maybe increasing or whatever, the taxes that they might be concerned about it. And so they might vote no for it and then they aren't getting the money that you may have, if you went with, I don't know, 150, 200, that you may have gotten to cover some of those things, you know? I don't know.
You're not going to come by the elementary to the new school, this school is 88.
Right.
So then there shouldn't be, there should not be, I'm not going to say positive, but not any tax difference.
I know.
You hope.
You hope.
I mean, you want to get this, take care of and help the next.
Right.
We all know we need elementary schools.
Right.
We all, I mean, we all know that.
Right.
But you got to pay for a whole, unless this is close to being.
Well, I just think there's going to be a lot of questions about that when we have the levy discussions. People are going to add, you know, I mean, that's going to be a question that we're going to have to be able to.
We have to explain it.
Right.
Did you have a question? We need the answer to?
No, I just, it said when we're done with the bond.
Oh, when you're done?
Yeah, what year that was. So he was just explaining.
About 2020.
Are we able to like finance that a different way to roll it into a?
Yeah, if you went early and there were two years left, they would let, you could refinance those last two years so you don't have a big bubble.
Yeah.
Big tax increase for two years, you could keep that smooth and pretty, pretty level.
So we're not held to that 2020 date then as far as being done with this and elementary school?
Could go earlier and refinance. I think this was a 22 million, 23 million dollar facility. You're going to get a lot of elementary school for that much, I would say too, so.
But I think, a lot of people have voiced that, just talking about this operation levy, that they, they're like, well, we need new school. We need a new elementary school. And they want money, they want their money to go that way. And I think a lot of people will be like, well, now they want, you know, I mean, I think that's going to be a concern. And we're going to have to talk about that or have discussions about that.
Absolutely. We'll be talking a lot about that.
Yeah, I mean.
Where things are at.
I think if we talk about going 10 years, you have to think how expensive things may get, you know, on your five, six, seven, eight. So if you go very small, are you really covering yourself for 10 years and for the needs that the students may have?
If it doesn't pass, it doesn't matter. So, you know, I mean, either. Because then you have nothing. You know, I just, I don't know. It's hard to know.
Well, the 10-year sounds like.
Yeah, I agree.
10-year. And a renewal.
Two questions.
Yeah.
Second question.
You go back to that slide again where it shows 100, 200. Can you go back there? Just my brain, thank you, thank you. We're the last two. You're going to be the first here.
Yeah.
You know, I mean.
You would generate roughly 300 something thousand.
I asked if like the administrators heard anything from parents as far as what their take is on the levy, new schools, or anything like that.
I think the buzz is out there about an elementary school down the road. You know, I think it's all about the timing of, you know, in the past, it just wasn't there. We're getting to that point now where the timing is going to be where you can make this happen. Again, I should have, never did produce the documents that showed what the community surveys did say. But I mean, it was between that 14 and 1500 is where they felt that that would be, they could palette that type of increase for that, so. Is that 100% of the people?
How many people took the survey? I would say, how many people was it with quite a few?
Three, 400 or something was it? They did a phone survey?
Not a ton.
And in all reality, when you guys asked for the larger amount last time, it was not passed only by 99 votes.
Right, it was close.
Quite close.
And that was a year ago.
Right.
Last, you're going to bet more. And that was asking the larger amount.
Right. True.
I'm leaning towards doing like 200. I'm okay with 250.
I feel that way too. I'd be comfortable with 200.
I just think, you know, we're kind of middle of the road.
Yeah.
On doing that, I don't, I don't know. I'm just, again, starting conversation.
Yeah. That's where I'd be comfortable, I guess, starting. I don't.
I mean, do you as our financial guide, do you mean, can you, you feel comfortable that you can work with, with that? And provide the services that we think that we need to give our students?
It's in that range. So I, I look at what that survey said, you know, where we're at, that 250,000. You know, that's, that's some of those positions. And it gives us that flexibility in our budget to make that work. Things change, they change. It's not out of wine. I mean, it wouldn't be, I'm not going to sit here and say you're wrong or right. I mean, you have to make that decision. It fits in that range of where things are at. I think we've talked and we feel like we should be, the committee talked about, you know, trying to get within that range. This gets us to about 1400, which is kind of the lower end of that as a board. I think that's prudent. I don't think you've, you know, it's not anything. And we haven't put together our campaign either yet about explaining what all this wants. But I think that the community, you know, always wants to support its students. And $66 a year, you know, that's, that would be what the increase is. So. Another 250,000 dollar increase in our budget, that's going to go a long way.
I was leaning towards where Lance had visited, 250, because that puts us below what they said they could, the survey stated.
Sure.
But yeah, it might give more value as we go down the road.
Right, right. I mean, like I said, I mean, I'm comfortable with 250. I'm just trying to, you know, think, will this pass? Better add a 200? Or, you know, would people be okay once we explain the things that it's going to be used for? Would they be supportive of that? You know, if you get the right information out there. I mean, I just, I mean, I think it could go that way too. I just, you know, it's a tough call.
Well, and one thing we do got to look at too is this facility is almost 20 years old. We're going to start incurring some pretty hefty expenses on this. So I think, I agree with Lance and Mars. I think we need to probably stay at that 250 just to generate a little extra. Maybe we need to earmark some of that for maintenance of this facility. Because we don't want to get this one where it's like some of the other facilities have been in the past, where there's no way of digging out of the hole of you can shovel money at them all you want. You're, you're just falling behind yet.
More 10-year long-term plan, kind of address some of those issues?
That'll come out next fall. ISG will have that and give us an idea, you know, that's the only thing. We do have LTFM dollars that's going to increase also. But we are using some of those tennis court.
But you also have two facilities that are 50-plus years old.
Right.
That suck up them long-term facility maintenance dollars. And chances are, you're going to shovel some more dollars that way just because you got to keep those buildings more operational. This one will limp along a little bit longer before you do got to stick serious dollars to it. But I don't think we want to get to the point where we're letting this one go.
No.
And then you fall behind. So myself, I would, I would go with 250, but I'm one of seven for six here tonight, so.
Like I said, I mean, I'm fine with 250, 200. I mean, I'm okay with either. I just, you know, I just want to make sure that it's going to pass so that we don't have to go through this. Again, you know, I mean, and if that number at 250 falls under what the survey said, if we try it and it doesn't pass, I guess we try it in the spring. I mean, you know, I don't, you know.
So what do you need from us?
Motion?
I move we do 250 for the second question. A second.
Mr. Roy, thank you, Mr. Botts. Do we need more to that? Like how many years and how many questions? Is that all in one motion?
10-year, two questions.
First year renewal.
First question a renewal, second question is $250.
Increase.
Per pupil request.
That's what I needed to say? So I amended my motion because it was.
I guess it was clear to me, but.
I think we've been talking.
I think it was clear.
I think it was clear, but I think we should do a roll.
So the motion is to?
Do a 10-year on the first question on the renewal and 250 on the second question. For 10. For 10 years. Look at me like that for a second.
Thank you, Mr. Roy. And a second was by Mr. Botts. All in favor, sign.
Sure. I thought you were asking if that's what we should do, but yeah, okay.
I don't think we have to.
I'm on the favor, yeah.
I think we have to. But those who oppose, we just have to identify ourselves, right?
I think we can just call for.
Yeah, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes.
Six zero.
Six zero.
Alrighty.
All right. 8.5, approve 2017-2018 resolution for membership in the Minnesota State High School League.
This is something we have to do every year.
Any questions or discussion? Have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Tauber. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 8.6, approve dissolution of the cooperative sponsorship of girls gymnastics with Southwest Christian Schools.
Just maybe, this is, we have a sponsorship with Southwest Minnesota Christian. Southwest Minnesota Christian is dropping the activity, so. So we don't, we don't need to sponsor the thing. Formal action is needed by the board to approve it. Is there anything else that you understand in that?
Any questions? Have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Botts, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
That's Mr. Erdman.
Oh, Erdman, I'm sorry. You've just been promoted. You need to switch that, sorry. My bad. Mr. Erdman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 8.7, approve policy 209 Code of Ethics.
The Policy Committee did such a good job that they overwhelmed the office staff and we just, we just missed it. Got it misplaced. It should have been on last. Again, this is one you guys are all very familiar with. And it was just a one-word update, I believe. So this one here, I would recommend that you approve it with one reading and.
It was supposed to be, but I missed the last one.
Right, so. Just another update.
Questions or discussion? Have a motion to approve policy 209?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Wies, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Tauber. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 8.8, approve donation of $350 from Edward Jones for wrestling mats. And 8.9, approve donation of $1,875 from Arrow Athletic Booster Club for winter banquet meals for athletes.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Roy. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you to Edward Jones and to the Arrow Athletic Booster Club. Number nine, have a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Tauber. Thank you, Mr. Roy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, same sign. Motion passes, meaning adjourn.